All right, if everybody is here, and I think they are, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 5:31 on October 22nd for our specially called workshop. Ms. McGrew, can you go ahead and take the role?
Well, Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
And Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockton.
Here.
You have a full form.
All right, this is a workshop that was scheduled from our October 12th meeting in reference to the proposed capital improvement budget and funding process. So it is open to the public, and any public that is listening, you will be given an opportunity to ask questions, give your thoughts or statements on it. But they will only be on the capital improvement plan or funding, no other comments. If you do have a comment, I ask that you wait until after this presentation, and then if you will press star nine and raise your hand, we will answer or try to answer all questions. So with that, we will go ahead and then get on with the meeting. I think Andy has a presentation that we wanted everybody to kind of look at before we got into it. So Andy, I'm going to turn it over to you and Lindsay.
Lindsay's going to bring up the PowerPoint. Actually, I think Black Byron's doing the introduction piece of this.
I can, Andy, thanks. I can just appreciate council's time, appreciate council being here. You know, we've been talking about this for a while. And that definitely SB2 when it came out, it's definitely going to force us to think about projects and the way that we do approach budgeting in the future. So what we wanted to come and bring to you today on this workshop, unfortunately, Art has been out of town. He had a funeral he went to, so we hadn't really been able to get the legal language we want to make sure we have in your packet. Packers will be going out tomorrow, he'll be back in tonight. We're going to meet first thing in the morning, make sure we have everything we need to move forward. So in looking at the capital improvement project fund workshop, you've got to pretty much look at it and go, okay, we have a three-legged approach, a plan-driven, funding and protecting our future. So with that comes our capital improvement plan, and you'll see how this fits all together. Capital Improvement Plan is a short-range schedule of poke improvement projects planned by the city to occur over the next three-to-five-year period, and includes project description, cost, and sources of funding. Now, there are plans out there that go four to 10 years. This is the City of Katy Plan. This is our plan. This is council, mayor, city, staff, everybody getting together saying, let's come up with a capital improvement plan. In that capital improvement plan, and you'll see the three legs of the stool, one leg of that stool is a capital improvement project fund, okay? The other leg to it is a departmental capital reserve fund, and then the final leg would be the reserve fund protection plan. So what we're trying to look at is, is how are we going to build these three legs of this stool to make it sturdy for our future? And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to let Andy talk about the capital improvement project fund. So Andy, go ahead. If you have questions, just stop either one of us.
Lindsay, can we go back to the PowerPoint? Okay, this is, this is one of the, this is the first, one of the legs of the, what we're discussing, capital improvement project fund. When, in a few moments, I'll go over the mechanics of how we're going to manage this. But initially, we're using approximately $2 million of the current reserve fund balance to create the new capital improvement fund project. And see how, you'll see later in the spreadsheet where that comes into play. The fund would be used to fund capital improvement projects that exceed budgetary allowances. These projects will be recommended by staff and approved by city council, restoration of the fire department, library, municipal court, and police parking lot expansions, and other capital needs. Can we go to the spreadsheet now? So this piece, I sent you all this spreadsheet, and this piece is just for reference for the capital projects that were in fiscal year '20 that we deferred, and may or may not be in the '21 budget. And the reason being is we kept the budget low, knowing that we may come back to council later to include these in the budget or keep them deferred to the following year. We wanted to make sure we can sustain, survive and sustain the pandemic first. The only new item is, we know, we all know that we have to restore the fire station one. We don't have a bid yet, but we are estimating $1.2 million. So we have a total of $670,000 here in deferred capital projects plus the $1.2 million estimate totals to $1.8 million, $1.9 million rounded in capital projects that we booked that are deferred and not in the '21 budget. Let me walk through the mechanics of the capital improvement plan. So there's, we've created sections of the plan into cap, city facilities, public safety, information technology, streets, drainage, water utilities, neighborhood in urban design, fleet, equipment, and other. And I hope that all makes sense to you, because there's still opportunity to change this, but it appears to work so far. And there's two, there's two components to this, and this is, what you're looking at now is just a draft. It's a visualization of what it will, it will look like. We can make it prettier than this at a later date, but the very first column, 2021, is the current fiscal year. Now that, this is the only column that will ever, that is approved by council. And what current, usually happens is you have other projects sitting out here in '22, '23, '24, and '25, and you'll find that of the deferred projects that I showed you in the previous spreadsheet, you'll find those currently sitting here in 2022, because we have not approved them to be in '21 yet. And that usually what happens also is when we find that we want, we might bump something to a subsequent year just to keep it, just to keep it on the list. Now, what I like about this, I'm actually very excited about this, but I like about this, it is an inventory of all our projects, and it's a blueprint of what, what we were about to do. I say it's a blueprint of a house that never gets finished. And so not only does it, in the spreadsheet you're looking at right now, take city facilities right, right there. So we have all the projects. You have your library, parking lot, municipal courts, public and water, but water department, training room. And below that are the sources of funding. And so we have different types of sources of funding. We have general fund revenues, enterprise revenue. We also have bond issuance, and you'll see that in the spreadsheet I sent you. We also have lease financing. And if you can go to the bottom. Lindsay. Yeah, so this is the summary of everything above. So here's the total of cap, city facilities, like I showed above. And then this is the summary of all the funding sources that I mentioned. And so the $2 million that we're talking about basically covers line 144, the general fund revenue in year, in year fiscal year 2022, at $1.8 million. And that represents, in what the previous spreadsheet said, was basically the deferred projects plus an estimate of the fire station. I've worked with this before. I think it's a great idea, plus it keeps the O and M side, or the general fund, O and M side departments, just through their operating cost. If you take the capital out, then we can have a better idea of how efficient these departments are running, and are they sticking to their core responsibilities and anything else that we can explain? And then we can make judgments from year to year. And we should know what the increase is every year and know that it's reasonable. Are there any questions?
Andy, you have a question about under '21, you have under the water utilities, $7 million?
Right.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah. So the $7 million represents water, the water plant and the sewer plant. We're using a bond to pay for the sewer plant, and we're using enterprise revenues to pay for the water plant.
Awesome, thank you.
And Andy, that's what we just approved at the two council meetings ago, correct? That project?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, this is just, just a draft. You know, you're directing us to continue with this and go out five years and figure out what we all need so that we don't overspend in the current year if there's something drastic that we might need in a future year. Or it also, like I said before, it gives us an example, an inventory of everything that we need to do. And living in the three-and-a-half percent world that we live in, that we're in now, we may look at this and decide that we may have to bond some of this, and we can ask the citizens to allow us to do that.
Is that, is that a potential for a future bond? I mean, were you talking about something in May that could be established by staff, some recommendations?
Can you repeat that again?
When we're talking about a bond for capital improvements, that's something that could happen in May. Is that something that staff is working on or could work on to give us some ideas on where we want to go forward with that? And do we have a timeframe that we need to be done?
No. I think what we need to do is finish this spreadsheet, go out five years. I'll be working with each director, taking inventory of large equipment. This I have in here under public safety. Can you go to that, Lindsay? Line 32, we have an ambulance. We know we're going to be in need of an ambulance. So we already have that out there, and that's just an estimate of what, when we think we're going to need that. And that's being funded with general fund revenues. Now, if we see that our three-and-a-half percent is not going to provide us enough money, we could wrap the ambulance and possibly some other items that we're not going to be able to pay for with, with general fund revenues and bond them all together.
Now, and then that bond, that bond does not go against our three, three-and-a-half percent under SB2, correct?
No, three-and-a-half percent restriction is only on the O and M side. The INS is not restricted, so we can go out and get debt to pay for some of our projects, and it does not affect our, it's not paid out of our three-and-a-half percent.
Okay.
Andy, this is Frank. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So I heard you say earlier that these would get put into the spreadsheet, and then it would later come to council for approval. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes.
So by passing this plan, is council spending any money whatsoever?
No, because you have, every year that comes up, you have to appropriate the next year's projects within this plan. So this is a working document. It's going to change. For instance, that $250,000 that I do have for the fire, fire ambulance there, we're not committed to that, and it might get bumped to the next year if we don't have the funding for it.
So if someone were to characterize this as a money grab, not much of a money grab if we're not grabbing any money, right?
There's no grabbing here.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Andy.
No, no, it's all planned, and nobody does anything without your approval as city council.
I wrote down that you said that you were excited about this when you were giving your presentation. Why are you excited about this?
Because I love the analytics of this, and I, what I want to be able to do is determine what our core responsibilities are at each department. For instance, with the fire department, we started in the, in the police department. They're two largest ones. I went to both direct, both chiefs, and with the fire department, we, I think I gave the equation of what it takes to man each apparatus. And that's, there's four, I'll give you example, one fire fire truck requires four personnel 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and that's how we should manage it. I can figure out what the cost is for that, and how our scheduling works to fill all those spots. And if we can, in the fire, in the police chief also said how many, how many patrol officers he has in each shift, and it, it, he gave me different, different levels from what was required to cover all of Katy, and what happens if all hills are exclusive, and he has to put more men out there on patrol. Right now, we're below the medium in that case.
And so why do you concern yourself with all these analytics? What's the point?
The point is, actually, it's, I think it helps with transparency. I think we have a responsibility to the citizens to be efficient with their money. And plus, if we are very efficient on the operations side, we may have more money to, to be able to pay for some of these projects.
And so transparency and efficiency, are those important to you?
Yes.
Is that something that you strive as a professional to bring to the City of Katy and its budget process?
Yes.
Andy, how long have you been a finance professional?
About 30 years.
And what's your position at the City of Katy?
Director of Finance.
So as a expert finance professional, is it your recommendation that this city council adopt this plan?
Yes, it's my recommendation that we move forward with this. So again, this is just a visual, what it's going to look like. It's not complete, because we don't know everything that's out there in some of the the years, '23 through '25, even '22, we may not know all that's out there until we've taken inventory of all our assets and have even a replacement plan. There's a lot involved with it.
Well, Andy, I trust you as a professional. I trust you as somebody that I've seen and do a good job for the last two years or year and a half. And I appreciate the work that you put into this. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So I have a question, I guess, Andy. So this is really more of a, of a planning tool, is how I see it. When, so when we are talking about budgets of projects or even maybe emergencies that come up, we have, we can go to this plan and we can see a five-year picture. We know what expenses we're looking at in the future. So it may help us decide whether or not we want to go forward with a project or not at this current time, knowing what's coming the next year. So it's just another tool in our arsenal of planning.
Right. So with this document here, if I was a citizen and I was looking at a financial statement of a city, and we have a fund balance reserve requirement, and we have a balance above that, I would say, you know, you're hoarding your cash. But when you have a plan like this, you can see what's going on in the future, and we need that cash to be able to implement this project, this plan, rather.
So I have a question, and Frank may have kind of asked this when he was talking. But is it unusual for a city of, say, Katy's size to have a capital improvement plan, or is it standard practice?
It's standard practice. It's not unusual for a city the size of Katy to not have it, but I think we should.
Continue, considering we continue to grow.
Yeah, I think you should want it also, and that everybody gets used to this, and when I'm gone, that, you know, we can still manage this.
And this is never going to be a finite plan. I mean, it's, it's always going to, it's always going to change as things come up, and the years go on. We'll finish one project. We'll be looking to add probably additional projects. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes. Yeah, something's going to come up every year, and it may become more urgent than what we've had on the, on the, on the plan last year. And so you might move that, again, that fire ambulance to the next year to be able to include that. But I think it shows prudent planning and a good use of our funds, and it shows the citizens that, you know, we've, we're investing a lot in the city. This document shows everything that we're doing, rather than having the fire department doing their thing, and even enterprise doing, keeping all their projects in their fund. This gives, in one document, shows everything that we're doing, investing in the city.
One other thing I did, I pulled out our last strategic plan, and I was looking at some of the projects in there, and I can see that this is also going to be very useful at the next strategic planning session that we do to determine, to help us determine priority of projects. That's my opinion.
And I think that's one of the greatest benefits to this, as a council or as the city, is able to prioritize which of these need to be done immediately, which ones we can put off till next year, or we may even look at what we've got scheduled next year and bring it forth this year. I mean, it, it gives you the, the ability to prioritize.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. And before we've made decisions, and we haven't, we haven't had the full picture, and so I like being able to see the full picture.
I do too. I, I think it looks good. It makes sense having it all written out. Glad to see the investment in parks on there, and it's scheduled out, so. And the equipment budget, I think it looks real very good, Andy.
Thank you.
So what's the next step?
We're still continuing with this workshop. There's some, there's some, are you talking about just with this fund?
Just in general, I mean, you're, I guess, next step, what's the next step that you need from council?
We need your authorization to direct us to go actually, to move forward with this. So that's, that's going to be quite a bit of work to figure out what, everything that we need, all the voids we need to fill over the next five years. And I'm looking forward to our city engineer coming on staff and helping out with this. And then I, we will complete this to the best of our knowledge, bring it back to you. I think we already have a capital, capital project fund. So everything, everything here will be in one single fund, rather than that, rather than be, being budgeted within the departments. So I think the next step that we need from you is to direct us to do all this. It's quite a bit of work. It's a big investment, and
Hey, Andy, I have some questions since I haven't gotten to speak yet. Can we go back to the slide that has the numbers, please? So I've, I've spent a lot of time in the past 10 days since this got brought up, doing research, meeting with other cities, other mayors, other city councilmen, just to figure out how they got started, and there's, I noticed going through our records, it looks like we haven't done one since '21. So, I mean, I'm sorry, since 2001. So we definitely, we need this. We need to put something in place for projects. My concern, I think, comes in that this got brought up 10 days ago, and you've put together this spreadsheet, but in all the research I've done on CIPs, there's a lot that goes back behind the scenes. So this is a good representation of what I think the department heads think that they need in the next five years. But where are the studies and everything that's gone behind? So you can tell me on here that we need library equipment, but I'm looking for the research and everything done behind the scenes that says why we need library equipment. Is it outdated? Is it something that's, you know, is it outdated? Do we need news? I mean, I'm just looking for more than just words and numbers on a page. And, and I know what goes behind the CIP in doing all this research. And so I guess my question to you, what you're wanting from us, are you just wanting us to say, hey, we totally agree that we need the CIP? Because I think we're all completely on board on that. Are you wanting us to say, we need the CIP, and you want us to fund it right now without having any definition of, of the projects that need to get done?
The definition of the other projects, I'm sure that we have the definition of all those in fiscal year 2021. The definition of all the other projects doesn't exist yet for, I mean, for fiscal year 2022 and beyond, doesn't exist yet. And that's the work that we're asking for you to give us approval to do.
So you're, so the projects you have listed here for '21, you're wanting us to fund that from the excess in the reserves?
No. 2021 is in the budget currently, and if we had, if this was already in place, that's what it would look like.
Okay. Can you click then, that's where I got confused. Can you click on the other document, Lindsay, that says the capital improvement projects? Okay, so that's just the deferred, okay. Okay, you can go back to the other one. So what are you asking, so now I'm confused then. What are you asking us? You're wanting us to move $2 million over into another account and to fund projects out of that. Is that correct?
Well, we were, we were asked what, we do have an excess of fund balance over, or required balance right now, and so
Over at 50%.
So we were asked, what would we move today? And our answer was approximately, well, $2 million, because we have an approximate $1.8 million of unfunded products that we know of now.
And those are the projects we deferred?
Yes, plus the fire station mediation. If we wanted to create this If we wanted to create this today, we would have to do an amendment to the budget to move all these projects into a new fund for 2021. And I can do that. Those have already been approved by you. And then we would quickly have to work on, not quickly, but we'd have to work on all the projects for 2022 through 2025, try to get the best information we can. And the, those in 2022 could be budgeted for, could be next year's budget, or we decide to move $2 million into this fund and moves those projects in 2022 that are, that are funded by general fund revenue, move them to 2021. Does that make sense?
Lindsay, can you go back to that other tab? Jennifer, you, you had mentioned this, that comprehensive plan that we hadn't, we had done in 2001. That's, that's one of them here that was a deferred project. So it's, it's kind of like one of those, we were, we were right there, ready to do it in the budget, to kind of then move and get it, get everything kind of, that, the three to five-year mark, and then the five to 10-year, and then 10 to 15. So, you know, that's one that we would probably ask council to maybe move up, okay? Because it'll help us identify other things. Now we got the engineer coming in, so now we, you know, we definitely know we got to do the, the fire station, right? That's kind of a given. So, so that one we, we knew. So it's kind of like, okay, we know we're going to have to either do it in reserve funds or maybe now we can move to the capital, you know, improvement project fund. So, you know, this might just be, yep. I know we've got $2 million of things that were at one time important enough to be in the budget, right? So these deferred project, capital projects, at one time were important enough to be in a budget. So that's kind of how Andy came up with the $2 million was, and we don't know what the fire station is going to come back at. That, that number is, we've kind of put it hot. And we hope, you know, because it does have a good structure to it, and, and we'll see what we get back when we get the bids, so.
Well, my thought is, why even, so on all the research I've done on capital projects, I mean, most of the time you're looking at like one to five years or even longer. So I don't, I guess in my mind, I can't understand why would we even move the money that we know we need to the fire department into a capital fund? Because this is, I mean, the fire station, we, we know it's a non-negotiable. Like, it's, it's an immediate rehab need that we need. And to me, we could just leave that money in reserve, and when we get the bids and it gets presented to us, and we all get to vote on it, boom, we use the money right there out of the reserves. I, I don't understand the need to take that amount and move that over to a CIP when it's something that we're hoping we're going to start in the next few months, or we're praying we're going to be starting it that quickly. So what would be the benefit of moving those dollars over? We know it's already a project.
Those dollars will be available, or.
I'm sorry.
Those dollars will be available in the capital improvement fund. Doesn't mean we're going to spend $1.2 million on that, that fire station. We're going to try to spend the least amount possible on that fire station.
Well, what's the benefit of moving it? That's what I don't understand. That's just what I need to understand in my mind. Because I'm like, it's already sitting in our reserves. Our reserves are there for an emergency. We've got the money there. How does it benefit the city and us to move it to another fund?
It doesn't. It's the same thing, Jennifer. It's this money, when we started talking about fire station number one remediation, we looked at reserves. We figured that we have a maximum, after talking with the engineers, a maximum of $1,200,000 maximum that we could spend on this project. That money was already earmarked in reserves for this use. But it was the city's impression that, as a council, y'all wanted this money to put in a separate pot to make sure that it was going to be used for the fire department. But there is no benefit of moving that money today to a capital project fund. It's the same, it'll, it, at the end of the day, it's all going to go to the same place, to the remediation of the fire department, whether we take it straight out of reserves when we need it, or whether we put it in this fund that's coming out of reserves. So there, your, your question is valid. There is no difference.
I didn't think there was, but I just.
There is no specific need for doing it that way. This was council's wish to look at doing this. And that's what Andy's worked hard on, trying to. And the overall concept of the capital improvement plan is great. But there's a lot of different facets that have to be explored, have to be justified.
Absolutely.
You just say we need a library parking lot. The community, the citizens deserve to know what's the justification behind that. So there is a lot of pieces. And all of this presentation tonight is doing is just showing council a plan to move forward and asking y'all if it's okay if Andy moves in that, right, in that direction.
Okay, so I'm a little confused here. Are we talking about a one particular project? Are we talking about the plan? So it seems like we've moved from one to the other. So. In, in one, in my one-on-one, I gave no direction as to what projects needed to be moved to the capital improvement plan. I trusted Andy and Byron, they are our financial people, to determine which projects needed to be moved from reserves into a capital improvement fund. So if they don't think the fire station needs to be there, but that, that was, that was not something that I, I was pushing for. My big thing is I want a capital improvement plan so that we can see when we have to make decisions what the outlook looks, looks like. And Jennifer, you made a, you made a comment about you want the analysis and that type of thing, and I totally agree with you. And a lot of that's going to come from the comprehensive plan, which unfortunately had to get pulled from the budget. So to me, the advantage of having some money in a capital improvement fund, a separate fund, is my understanding, how it's always been presented to me, is that the reserve fund is for emergencies. Okay, and maybe the cap, the fire station could be considered an emergency. But all this other stuff that we know is four, five, or, you know, even a year in the future, we need to know what those are and not react to everything as an emergency. So that was the whole thing. This is a planning tool. Now, how much they want to put in the, I'm going to leave that up into Andy and Byron as to how much they want to move into that fund. But we want to make sure that we have the money for these, whatever we determine needs to be in this plan, that we have that money, that budget set aside, and not be doing these, as Chris called it, a knee-jerk reaction that, oh, we, now we have to go running to our reserves. Let's try and get ahead of the, the issues and the projects and be proactive in our planning.
Christmas in June.
Pardon?
Christmas in June.
And I completely agree. And, you know, while I agree with Bill that there's no practical difference, because the dollars are the dollars, I don't agree that there is no difference. We need to start thinking intentionally about capital projects. There was routine maintenance at the fire station that probably should have been ongoing. You don't just wake up one day and the fire station is so dilapidated that it requires $1.2 million. It didn't get hit by an asteroid. There wasn't a hurricane that came and made all this damage. This is a failure of maintenance. And so ultimately, and we've also, we have seen the report, you know, I want to clear the record. We have a report on the fire station, and we know what needs to be done there. And we have a high and we have a low. We've discussed things like tearing the fire station down and rebuilding. We've talked about doing different things in order to remediate. So these discussions have happened. But it's exigent. We have to do it, but it's not an emergency. It wasn't a hurricane. It wasn't a hailstorm. It's maintenance. And so we need to start thinking intentionally about our maintenance obligations as a city that's growing. And I think this gets us as a first step. Also, I want to clear the record that this is not something that came up in the last 10 days. Andy, how long have you been working on this? This idea of a capital improvement project? It seems to me that we talked about this like, I don't know, maybe your third week at the city, but I could be wrong. How long have you been working on it?
The idea's always been there since I came on. But I knew that I have to get, sell it and get buy-off, and, and it may take some time. I wasn't prepared to do this, this budget. But we, we could if you guys really wanted to.
And then the final, last thing I want to add is, by being intentional now, we can look at things like the $585,000, $590,000 we spent on a piece of parkland across the street from City Hall. We could have waited against these other projects and determined whether we had the money for that, whether it should have been something we do next year, or whether it gets moved up to this year. But I will say, I don't remember there being a study as to why we needed more parkland. I don't remember there being a study as to what this was going to be used for as part of our comprehensive plan. I don't remember any studies except for, there's a piece of land, it's adjacent, it would be good, there are things that we can do with it, and if we don't buy it now, it may turn into a Taco Bell. And that was the extent of the studies, and we allocated more money than four times for the library parking lot, three times for the municipal court parking lot, five times for the comprehensive plan. So I understand the idea that we're going to now change the, the goal line or the, the goal, you know, the goalpost on this, but we haven't been acting intentionally regarding capital improvements and capital expenditures. And that's okay, but this gets us as a first step towards acting intentional. And so I, I couldn't more strongly endorse this thinking. It locks nobody in. It's no mu, no money being expended. It's a change in the way of thinking that helps Andy do his job.
Now, I want to explain what I was saying. Frank, I was talking specifically about the fire station remediation, which was Jennifer's question about the money between coming out of reserves or being moved here. To me, there is no difference there. That fire department, in my mind, is an emergency. And it would have come out of reserves with no issues at all. So my statement was directed to, is there a, a reason why it was put here? That was it, what we all considered council wanted us to do. But it would have been done regardless of whether we pulled it from reserve or whether we moved it to the capital project.
I'm completely agreeing with you, Bill. And if, if I wasn't clear on that, we agree 100%. My point was that I don't think that there's no difference here, because it's a change in the way of thinking that's for the better. That's all I was saying.
No, all of these other projects, I agree, they need, they need to be scheduled out. We need to have a plan as to when and how we're going to do them. But they are not emergencies. And that's where we have always gotten reserves from, is generally like you said, when we call something an emergency. So I'm, I'm all on board with what Andy's doing. And I think it'll be a great tool that we can use for, from now on. But my, my response was strictly in regards to the remediation of the fire department and Jennifer's question as to whether, why. So, but I, I fully support this capital improvement plan.
Hey, Andy, a couple more questions I have for you. So when I went on our website and the city's website and you typed in CIP, there's, there's not much out there, but there is, you guys have kind of defined what it means to the city. And you guys put that things like ongoing maintenance activities, smaller routine capital expenditures for vehicles and technology are generally not included as a part of this, nor projects under 50,000. And so I've noticed on one of our projects here, it's under 50,000. So have you just?
So that $50,000 is a threshold. It's usually a threshold set by finance and, and $50,000, you'll see even the larger cities, like Houston, use $50,000. But we could tailor that to fit the city of Katy. If $30,000 is, is a cap, is a material capital item for the city of Katy, we can, we can consider using $30,000 as the threshold.
And are we going to consider using dollars for maintenance as a, a capital improvement project?
Only if it extends the life of the asset.
And would you say that would need to extend the life of the project? How many years would you say that it would fall into this? Three to five or better, or?
It would have, well, we can define that.
Okay.
Life varies on the type of asset.
Andy, do you want to move on to your other legs of the stool?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd like to do that. Okay, okay, next is a departmental capital reserve fund. And the definition's right there, creating a long-term budget for all departments, facilitate long-term planning and saving for large purchases, projects. Each year, a department could roll into the, into the departmental capital reserve fund up to 5% of their unex, unexpended budget to save towards capital improvement projects or other large expenditures. So I've done this also in the past. And so what's not included in the plan are the smaller capital items, like one vehicle. So there's, there are departments that may only buy one vehicle a year, two vehicles a year. And so if they have savings from their current budget, they just did a real good job, they're efficient, they could say, they could, they could roll 5% of their budget, at a maximum 5% of the budget, into this, the, we'll call it the DCRF, to help them in, in the following year budget to purchase that, those assets. Those, what I could probably consider low-value assets. And that would work for the Parks Department in buying their mowers, tractors, equipment, but also for, not only the parks, but also for public works and streets, so forth. So at the end of each year, we would make this, I would get together with the directors and ask them, you know, what are their plans in the following year for, for their small capital items? And we'll move up to 5% of their budget. And I will be informing you of what, when we do it and, and how much it is. So the mechanics of that is, within each department, there is a transfer out. And so we will say they're going to transfer $10,000, so there'll be a $10,000 transfer out of their department to departmental capital reserve fund. And in that fund, there will be departments within that fund, and that will go. And that will go up specifically for that department within that fund. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Andy, I got a, I've got a question to, how council might feel about, you know, I like the 5% rollover. What if, what if, what if a department had 10%? Would, would we allow that department head to come to council and ask council to maybe move up to another 5% into that? Or do we as a council, do y'all rather see it just as up to 5%?
Now, we, we, we could make, build into this some sort of exception because 5% for three big departments is a lot of money. 5% for a smaller department may not, may not be enough. And so we could probably take a look at that.
Council, would, do y'all have any thoughts about that?
I think it encourages them to save for certain years. They may have something that they know they need every two years or, but if they have a savings, it's, uh, it's good for that year.
I think it encourages efficiency. I think governments in the past, you know, they say if you don't spend it, you lose it. We don't want that. And so if they know that they could have some savings that they could apply to something that they desperately need in the next year, make it easy on themselves, on themselves. I think that would encourage, that would be encouraged here.
I just want to make sure we're not going to inflate the budget so that they have this 5% to roll in.
This comes out of their budget.
But this will be something that Andy has to watch closely and compare budgets year to year and find out what the true needs
Absolutely.
of the departments are so that they're not inflating their budget to create the savings account for them.
I completely agree.
But I also agree with the fact that the larger departments, 5% can be quite a big, quite a chunk out of what they return at the end of the year. Smaller departments, I think that's where maybe some allowance needs to be made to where they could go to council and ask for, you know, an extended 5%, maybe 10% of what they could put in there. But that would be y'all's decision.
It gives them some flexibility and allows us to still have a say. It's a good idea.
But Byron, Byron, you and, you and Andy agree that this is a good management tool to, to help manage the budget?
Done right, done correctly, you can.
I suggest.
You know, we've always had the philosophy here and the department heads that I've had, you know, don't, don't run it like normal government that, that if you don't spend it, you don't get it back next year. You know, put it, put it back to the, to the general fund and, and every year, let's see what you need. So this way, it, it does kind of put a little emphasis on the, the department head to kind of go, okay, am I doing as, as efficient as I can? So if there is a savings at the end, I've got an opportunity to put that in for my department. So, um, but the, but you're right, the larger departments, 5% on the larger department can be a pretty big number, but you take your, you take the parks department, 5% of the money is not, is not that much.
It also allows them, um, with, with the revenue cap that we have of 3.5%. Maybe there's a department that, uh, can't fit an asset in a single year and they could move some of their savings to pay for that asset over one, two, three years, wherever it takes to get to, to where they can buy that piece of equipment.
I had suggested it in my one-on-one, I'm sure others did as well, about the coming to council above 5%. And the reason I said 5% is because there are going to be natural variations in budgeting, but if you're at 10% off your budget, you have failed in budgeting. Uh, that's too big of a number. So 5% allows for that natural variation. But at the same time, allowing it to go above 5%, it can encourage inflation, which is going to be monitored. But we also want to encourage creativity and cost savings. And cost savings can also make you off your budget. So for example, if there's an opportunity to lease a piece of equipment as opposed to buying it, the savings may be 5% for the parks department. You know, having a leased vehicle as opposed to buying the vehicle, it could be a 15% swing. And so at that point, they could come to council and say, we found a great financing option. It's going to allow us to save 15%. We would like to roll that into an improvement. And the council says, absolutely, this wasn't a failure of budgeting. This was creativity, this is good government and you can roll it over. And so that's kind of where the idea for the vote above 5% came from.
Right. So we can, we can, uh, get a little bit tighter on our budgets too, because I want to make sure we're as efficient as possible. And larger cities, um, personnel, there's a vacancy factor. So, um, and that comes with experience. You determine what the vacancy factor is. Say the, the police department has a vacancy factor of 10%. They're always going to be short in person, in personnel just because of turnover. So you can figure, you can figure out what, what all positions cost and budget that minus 10%. And that's really your target. It's, will be rare that, that you go above budget even with the vacancy factor.
Hey, Andy, what happens if there's a department that doesn't have that 5%? What will happen then? Have we thought about that?
If the department does not have 5% savings and they spent all their money, there's nothing to transfer.
Okay. So they're just hard of luck?
Yes.
Well, not hard of luck, right? They can come back to council the next budget year and say, we didn't have the 5% because we nailed our budget perfectly. So can you give us the 5% so we can get this piece of equipment or whatever? And at that point, council says, great job, well done thy good and faithful servant. Here's the extra money that you need to buy your piece of equipment. It doesn't, it doesn't bind council. We can allocate whatever we want to. Nobody's hard of luck. Just wouldn't automatically roll over.
Andy, this isn't an automatic process, is it?
No, it's not automatic.
Poor choice of words. Thanks, Becky.
I just wanted to make sure because like for my department, you know, I'm sure I'll have certain things that I plan for, but my budget's pretty dialed into our operations. So I, I might not automatically need to save 5% every year.
It's a great point.
Okay. Um, any other questions on the DCRF? I know department heads are, are looking at that going, this is a way I can maybe plan for, for something that I need for my department. So. And finally, the last leg of the stool. And I'll take a shot at this. Cause we all talk about reserves and we talk about what we use reserves for and how we've, how we've used our reserves in the past to make sure councils are always in a good position. If an opportunity comes up that we don't see, it's always going to our reserves. But S, you know, SB2 did kind of focus us a little bit different and go, okay, were those reserves really needing? Was the reserve for, right? Reserves for an emergency that comes up that you don't foresee. So the third leg of this is to create a reserve fund protection plan, which is create a reserve fund protection plan to require half the fiscal year budget be kept in a reserve fund up to 20 million. You already have a resolution that says you will hold half of your budget in a reserve. Right now you're about 16.5. And Andy and myself feel that as you move forward, as we grow in these next couple of years, that moving that target up to a $20 million reserve would be beneficial to make sure that this keeps with one of the city's core values of fiscal responsibility. Helps ensure rainy day fund for disasters such as a hurricane or other unanticipated expenditures that can't be captured within this plan. So we've lived through three. I've lived through four with Ike. When a hurricane hits, we've got to have reserve money to, to automatically influx because we're going to have expenditures right away that we're going to wait sometimes upwards of three years for FEMA to pay us back. So as we move forward, we feel that the $20 million mark would be a good reserve mark for the city of Katy. The good news with having Andy on board, Andy has worked for large cities with large budget. And when I say, you know, that 20 million will take us to 40 million. Well, for us to get to 40 million in growth, you know, we might be there in five years, we might be there in eight years. But then after we hit the 20, could we go from 40 to 50 and still just hold 20? And I'll let Andy kind of talk, talk about that, how the economy of scale, basically it comes a time where you're not necessarily needing to have half because the budget keeps growing exponentially. But really, what is the reserve actually going to get hit with? So Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, right. So the reserve amount helps us in, in a couple of ways. One, if we're going to go out for bonding, we, that's one of the first things they're going to look at. And that's, they measure the fund balance in many of their calculations. And if we have a healthy one, it helps us. Two, um, again, it, it helps us again with the rainy, rainy day disaster, uh, being able to cover rainy day disasters. And I had a, I had a thought, the third one. Oh, you don't, you don't, so you don't want this to get the, the, the reserve requirement too big because you want to be able to move any, any excess of fund balance over into the capital improvement plan. Capital improvement plan can hold its own fund balance. That citywide, that fund balance still rolls up into the citywide fund balance. Like for instance, if we go out and get funding, we, we decided that we want to do different projects from different years, roll them up into one bond. We'll be able to fund, uh, year one, but there's still going to be money left over for year two and year two and three. So that'll sit in the fund balance of the capital improvement plan. It'll still be included in the fund balance citywide. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Andy, and you, I think you talked, when we had talked, you said something to, you know, some cities at $100 million might only have $25 million in reserves, quote true reserves, but they could have another $10 million in the capital improvement plan to be able to take care of issues that come up in that, in that plan.
Right.
Andy, I have a question, just a general question. So I know that we stated in our charter that we're going to keep 50% of our budget. What, what makes other towns choose to do less? And then I just want to make sure by us, if we move money out of our reserves, that was one of the questions I had for you was about our bond rating. Will that affect our bond rating if we pull the 2 million out and move it over into a CIP?
No, I think our, our reserve requirement, 50% of the budget is a good one. And moving the excess over into the capital improvement plan would, uh, wouldn't hurt us because again, the unspent money in that, in that fund does roll into fund balance citywide.
Byron?
Yeah.
During Ike, um, wasn't our budget about 8 million and we spent four on repairs and cleanup?
I'm sorry, Glenn, I didn't catch that last part.
During Ike or after Ike, um, our budget was about 8 million at that year. And wasn't it about 4 million to clean up after Ike?
Yeah. Yes, yes.
And, and then, and relatively speaking, um, after Harvey, we're relatively at 28 million. I don't remember what it was to clean up the city afterward. So.
The budget?
Yes.
28 million and for Harvey, clean up on Harvey?
Yes.
I have to go back and look, but I think it was about three.
About 3 million?
I'll give you an example of what I've worked with in the past. The city of Houston, their 50%, I mean, our 50% is only 7% to them. That's because of the size of their budget. It's huge, four billion, four billion dollars. It doesn't make sense to, to, uh, do any more than, more than that in, for the city of Houston.
Byron, there's a, there's a third option. I know you don't like to hear it. People in government don't like to hear it. But the third option is we can give folks back their money. And so by setting the reserve at a reasonable level, we can put the money to work that needs to go to work. And then the rest of the money, we can give back to folks. And we've been very good the last several years about lowering taxes, giving folks back their hard-earned money. And I think that this is the same thing, having a huge reserve. We need to find out what the amount is that keeps our bond rating, that truly prepares us for a rainy day. But squirreling away a bunch of money above that is unconscionable in my mind. We need to put it to work for the folks, the residents of Katy. And if it's not going to be put to work for them and it's not needed for our rainy day fund, then it needs to go back to the folks. And I think everyone here agrees.
I would agree also.
That can be done.
And I was just giving you a little bit of grief Byron, because I can tell you, you, you take those pennies that are given to you by the city of Katy residents and you squeeze them until Abraham Lincoln is screaming on those pennies. So, you know, uh, you pinch them until, until Abraham Lincoln's screaming. So the, you have, the taxpayers have no greater friend at City Hall than you, Byron.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Okay. So what do we need to do? What do we need to do to move forward? All right. Next slide. Here we go. We got the, we got our three legs of the stool. Capital improvement plan, okay? Staff recommend, recommendation is to direct myself and the finance director to create a capital improvement plan that captures the, the three legs of this request. Creating a capital improvement project fund from a portion of reserves, creating a departmental capital reserve fund for each department and creating a reserves fund protection plan for our fiscal future. Now, we've got, I got here with Art tomorrow morning and try to find out, because I believe Becky, we have to do an ordinance to create the funds. Are you saying yes?
Yes. That's my understanding from the conversation I was able to have with him briefly. We should be able to have our legal review with him tomorrow morning. I can tell you that there's really not a lot on the agenda. It's, uh, we have a couple of recognitions and consent. And so we felt comfortable holding it to make sure that we're giving you the best information and legal language in this package. And, and then of course, what, what do we need to, uh, inform you will be coming down the line action-wise.
I think there, you should make a change there where it says, create, uh, uh, a res- from reserve funds in the first line, creating a capital improvement from a portion of reserves from excess reserves.
Portion of excess reserve?
Because we're not touching our reserve, we're touching the excess.
Well, yeah, the entire fund is called reserve funds, which is why we did it, but I, I do see your point.
Because I don't want anybody to get any ideas that it's a money grab.
Okay. So that's where we're going to meet with Art tomorrow. This is just a, this is just a workshop. There is no action, uh, tonight. We were, Andy and I would like just kind of get council's, you know, last thoughts. If y'all could kind of, you know, are we going in the right, you know, if we're, if we're off the, if we're off the train tracks, let us know now. If y'all see something else, but I'd like, if, if y'all could each one at a time, just give us your thoughts and, and go from there. So Mary, we can get back to you.
Well, at this time, we, uh, feel like we need to give anybody that's listening that would like a chance to ask any questions or to give any thoughts. If you'll press star nine, uh, we will be glad to entertain your questions.
Seeing none at this time, Mayor, and no comments in the chat.
All right. Well, thank you, Andy, for all the work you've done on this. And I want to thank council for being patient. And we will continue to move on with this and get with Art, formulate a I'm like Becky, I feel like it needs to be an ordinance and not a resolution. But we will move on with the creation of this and
Mayor, we do have one question. It's from our Hans Miller. Can the monies that go into any of these CIP funds be returned to the reserve fund?
Yes, they can.
It would just be an ordinance amending to transfer that money, correct?
Yes.
Hey Byron, would it be possible for you to send us this presentation? That would be great. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Andy and Byron and who, I don't know who else has been helping you with this, but I know y'all put a lot of effort into coming up with this presentation and to giving all of us an idea of what it was going to look like going forward. So thank you for your time and your effort.
Yes, I just want to echo what Janet said and all the questions from everybody, Byron, Andy, Mayor. I think everybody's worked really hard on this and we've all got together. And it sounds like everybody's given a few ideas. And it sounds like you've kind of all wrapped them up in a nice package. And it looks like it's going to be a great idea. Glad we're finally getting it done.
Yeah, thanks, guys. I appreciate you guys putting this workshop together. I know that I emailed and asked for it and I appreciate it. I had a lot of questions. I've done a lot of research. And I definitely appreciate the time that you guys have put into it. So thank you.
Well, I guess to close, I'd like to thank everybody for all y'all's input. And I can almost promise you that this is not going to be the last time we talk about it or discuss it. So we will move on from here. And I am going to go ahead and close this meeting. I don't need a motion.
Thanks, everyone.
44. Y'all have a great evening.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.